...the order, please rise for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska Government Body. The city is certified by the Nebraska means Act in conducting business. The copy of the Nebraska means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for their clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves a right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call a roll.
Welcome back here. Cameron, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
The first item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of December sixth, twenty sixteen.
Move for approval.
Give a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion, is there a second? Give a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. The next item, we have two appointments. The first appointment is for Fire Chief James Kimsey, and he'll also be in office administered. So, item eight A, we have the appointment for Fire Chief James Kimsey. Is there a motion? So move. Give a motion, is there a second? Give a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. James, do you want to come forward then? To the podium? Yeah, that's fine.
Can you raise your right hand, James? I'm going to read through this, you do not have to repeat after me. Um, I, please state your name.
James Kimsey.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and the ordinances of the City of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the saying that I take the salvation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the Office of Fire Chief of the City of Seward, Nebraska, according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me.
And James, I also just wanted to say, since we have you here, how much I do appreciate, I know we all appreciate all the work that the voluntary fire department has done, especially recently with the fire downtown. And even though it was devastating, especially for the families that were living there, it was, you were able to do the great job containing that and not spreading to other buildings and making it an even bigger disaster than it was. So, I just, again, just wanted to say, on behalf of the city, we really appreciate all that your department did that day. Thank you. Uh, the next appointment we have is for Fire Supervisor, and that's Ted Hughes. Is there a motion to approve? The motion and a second, is there any discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Alright, um, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. Uh, the first public hearing is consideration of special use permit application for lots one and two, block D, Seward College View Edition, Seward County, Nebraska, five forty North Columbia Avenue. Uh, John Hughes, did you want to kick this one off for us?
This property basically is the old Marxhausen corner. The college has come to us and they, they basically took one down to the Marxhausen building. With the exception of the studio, they're going to retain the studio in its present shape. And they would like to add a liturgical arts, uh, in hopes of creating some, creating religious artifacts. Uh, the property is currently zoned art floor. We're going through the special use permit. The rest of the college got taken into what's known as a university and mixed use district, but that was done when we adopted the, uh, the comprehensive plan. And it was decided to go through the special use permit because if we go through the mixed use permit and whatever, we have to get a master plan from the college, and this is a lot quicker. And that's basically it.
Did this go through the planning commission then?
Yes, it did, and it got voted on, yeah.
Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Uh, because this is a public hearing, I'll be opening up the public comment portion of this item nine. Does anyone from the public wish to, to speak on this item? Welcome.
I'm Dave Combs, sixteen eighty eight North First Street, Seward, and I'm the Executive Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, and Chief Operating Officer at Concordia, and, uh, um, would like to urge you to approve our special use permit for the property. The Center for Liturgical Art has been around for several years, and we kind of suck it wherever we could stick it on campus. But they do artwork for churches, religious institutions all across the US, and this year, excitingly, we are doing an international project, and we are doing stained glass windows for Hong Kong. And so, the center has moved along very well for us. We do want to make it, make it a prominent part of our campus versus having it stuck in the basement of an old residence hall. And, uh, we really want to also highlight some remembrance of, uh, right old Marxhausen. The front of the building will actually have the door that he had on the front of his house that he built himself. Will have some stained glass in the front windows, along with the mosaic. And, uh, it'll be a one-story building with a couple of shops inside. And a nice opportunity for this is our students on campus get the opportunity to come over and learn from our, our team on how to design and build art for liturgical purposes. So, um, in the special use permit, we did have a couple of changes which were approved last week, where, um, provisions for the zoning regulation, it was initially written down, custom manufacturing, it is college/university facility. And, uh, instead of ten years that we were seeking this permit, it was changed to perpetual because obviously, we want to continue to do it and not have to come back in ten years. So, if you've got any questions of me, um, I would be willing to answer. And we've got, uh, some other folks from our campus, if you had any other questions.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions from the council? No, thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, I'm going to enclose the public comment portion of this public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, I'd entertain a motion, uh, to approve the special use permit application for, um, for this location.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you. Item number ten, this is, uh, our second public hearing for this evening. This is a consideration of an ordinance, uh, rezoning lots five and six, block thirty-five, and lots eight through fifteen, TLS twenty-two through twenty-eight, block thirty-four, and lots four through seven, block thirty-four, all in Seward Cloyes Edition, three oh six Jackson Avenue, twenty, two twenty-two North Third Street and two forty-six North Third Street, from R four Residential Use District to CBD Central Business District. John, did you want to take that one too?
Yes. This is a rezoning application that came in front of the department. Uh, it's next to the Oakory Church, which is identified as Central Business District, and across the street from, from the, uh, used to be the old dental, the old medical building, which is also Central Business District. And in the process of reviewing Mr. Gross's application for rezoning to Central Business District, it's been the intent of the council, or not the council, the intent of the City Building Department, that when the city would buy the property to the north, we'd probably rezone this to Central Business District. Since these properties are adjacent and contiguous to the Central Business District, we thought we'd do them all at once. For the fire department, what this means is that it relieves you of having setbacks or concern with the residential floor which is twenty-five feet on both sides of the property. With Central Business, you can build up right to the block if you want. So it'll give you a little bit more flexibility if the fire department decides to pursue this property and construct new buildings on it. And Mr. Gross wants to rezone this property, has a large accessory building there, and he wants to run a silkscreen operation on it.
Any questions or comments from the council? Now go ahead and open up the public comment portion of this public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on item number ten? Seeing none from the public wishing to comment? I'm going to enclose the public comment portion of this public hearing. And during the council, any other questions or comments at this time? Does rezoning require free readings or do we leave this? I think you can suspend it during the ordinance, if, if the council wishes to. Is there any concern, did you want to discuss that?
Just curious, we had to listen three times. It's up to the council?
Go for it, bro.
Okay, um, for this ordinance, introduce that for me? In order to amend the official zoning map of the City of Seward to rezone certain lots within the Seward Cloyes Edition, block thirty-four and block thirty-five, within the corporate limits which is now zoned as R four Residential District to CBD Central Business District, to describe the property rezoned, which provide an effective date. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as Order Number twenty sixteen dash twenty-one. And the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Singing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-one. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, I'm sorry. Please register the votes, please display the votes. The next item we have is consideration of an ordinance adopting sexual predator residency restrictions for persons subject to the Sex Predator Registration Act and defined as sexual predator from residing in certain areas of the city. Kelly, did you want to, we can talk a little bit. I guess, let me start, just by saying that, um, this was something that was brought to, to our attention. The issue came up, um, and we, we actually looked into it and were surprised we didn't already have something in our ordinances. A lot of communities, um, were, followed the lead from the state statute that, that allows communities to pass such ordinances. I just assumed we already had something like this, um, but we didn't. So I, we talked to Kelly, and Kelly actually had drafted, um, this for another community. When, how long, how long ago was that?
Several years ago.
Several years ago?
I did draft it and compare it to current state statutes. So it models the state statute.
And this is as far as we can go, correct? Within state statute. And so basically, what it does is it puts limitations on, um, by creating a bubble around, uh, we, day, licensed daycares and schools as defined in state law. That's pretty much it. I think it's five hundred feet is that restriction. So, um, so that's the reason for this coming to the council. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time?
I, I do have a question, Kelly, since you wrote this. Section three, item C, references penalties. And it says, "A person who violates this section shall be punished as provided generally in the code." What's the code?
That would be our municipal ordinance, yes.
Yes, Sid.
Kelly, the, the certain areas, what, what is, what are the certain areas defined in the ordinance? Like schools, daycare, churches?
Sure, yeah. It, uh, school or childcare facility are the ones that are defined. So childcare facility is defined, school is defined in section two.
Just one other question, I'm assuming if there are existing residents that fit into this definition, they would be grandfathered in?
Yeah, the grandfathering provision is, is at the bottom of section three, item D, exceptions. So, the grandfathering is D two and D three. So, the ordinance does not apply to a sexual predator who established a residence before July first, two thousand and six, and has not moved from that residence. Uh, or subsection three, uh, the predator established the residence first before the school or childcare facility, uh, was established.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Dean.
Kelly, in your opinion, does this, have you heard, does this do what it's supposed to do for the most part? Do you ever hear of ups or downs about an ordinance like this?
I've not heard any feedback, Bruce, have you? I mean, it's, this is what the statute allows for us, so it's definitely, um, better than not having anything.
If five hundred feet is really not a tremendous distance, I mean, it basically prevents someone from living essentially next door. Now, it is property line, the property line. And so, if you are a school and you have a large property, well, it's not like it's, it's not measured from the building, so you have an additional buffer from that property line to an adjacent property line. So, in those instances, it's even farther than, than that. But it's essentially just prevent someone from living right next door, for the most part.
How many people would this displace?
I don't know.
Sid, what was the question, I'm sorry?
How many people would have to move?
My understanding is there's only one person that we're talking about right now? Yes, John?
So, the question, Kelly, then, now, you, you can evict somebody now if, after the ordinance? Or are they grandfathered because the ordinance wasn't in place?
Depends upon if they fall within those exceptions, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the details of that person.
I'm just saying that you're going to evict somebody that say they've lived in the house for five, six years. Is that something we're going to do?
If, if they're in vi, if, if they're in violation of this ordinance, yes.
Even though the ordinance, uh, was after the fact? Legally, where would we stand?
Well, if, if, if it does not, if the predator does not fall within the exceptions, but will fall within our legal rights.
And that remind, remind us the year, what year is that in the exception?
Two thousand and six. So, if the predator established a residence before July first, two thousand and six, and has not moved from that residence, then he is exempt from the statute.
So that person's grandfathered in essentially.
Right, I was just worried that, you know, we approved it, say we approved the ordinance today, and this is an existing homeowner, and then we're going to evict him. I'm just, I'm just a little worried for the legal side, that there going to be something come back on us.
Yes, Dean.
But how, how do you find residents? Were they owns a house, just lives there, or?
Residency is typ, well, I prefer to, Kelly, but typically, it's where you, where you sleep at night.
Where you reside.
Is where you reside, majority of the time. So they wouldn't necessarily have to sell the property if they owned it. And I'm not sure about this particular situation, if that's the case, but, um, but yes. And then it would be up to the police department, it would be up to them to monitor, um, the registry going forward for anyone else that might move into the area and, and to, to, um, be more proactive in that case, moving forward. Yes, Ellen?
I did some research on this, um, and looked at a number of studies. Most of the studies are from urban areas, but there are a couple from Iowa and, and smaller counties. And two of one, we should just, just know going forward whether we, you know, support this or not. It's just that none of these ordinances or laws have had any effect on recidivism. So, you know, they're, they're not shown to affect whether people commit another crime. The only concern about, I could find about rural areas in the research was, uh, again, if you create bubbles that are so often, you know, close together, you end up having nothing but farmland, uh, where people can live, so that could create a problem. And I don't know that this is the case in Seward at all, but that was the only reference in the, in the literature that I could find.
And in that instance, and I think I know what, what you're talking about, that would be intent by that city was to create bubbles everywhere so that there was, would be no place for them to live. And that was, I think, found unconstitutional. Uh, I think of one in particular, the only place within the city was under a biadoc. That was literally not within a bubble, because they created all these pockets. So, um, but yet, I think a lot of this is, is just, um, just creating the, the bubble for, for that purpose and, and for some peace of mind, I think.
Is it possible for the chief just to address us on his enforcement of it and just to?
Yeah, but Bruce, did you want to say something first?
Well, I was just going to say that, I, I got an email from a council member about this, and then that same day, we did have a meeting. Bonnie Fritz came into our office, met with Bonnie and I, because she wanted to put this on the council agenda. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that she did come into the office to talk about it. She has a daycare, I'm sure she wants to say something, but anyway.
It's up to you, did, uh, Chief, did you want to add something? And then when the chief's done, if you want some of the public wishes to comment on this, we'll give an opportunity as well.
Well, I've, I've done just a little bit of research with this as well. Um, there's a couple of issues, and you guys have touched on a lot of them. Some could say it's a positive type of a thing, and some others could say you're trying to push some other people out of a population. I did get ahold of Milford, and Milford's had this ordinance for quite a period of time now. And, um, they think it works, um, to keep, uh, the sexual predators, that really what this is about, sexual predator type of individuals, out of those specific zones. I also noticed, which is said, uh, there's a lot of studies out there that may not show that this necessarily stops some criminal activity from occurring. Having said that, I think we're giving our cha-chance to protect those children around there. And I think, uh, for the City of Seward, um, we're only talking, from my knowledge and belief, we're talking about one individual that happens to be, uh, temporarily going with or cohabitating with, uh, another individual in that area. And, uh, it's not like they're, they've got a home that they bought some time ago. Again, we're talking about a very relatively small population of our sexual offenders are classified as these predators.
Any questions for the chief?
Hey, can you, can you tell us how enforcement of this is being moved before? I mean, what's the process? You get notified by the state when they register, or what, what's the process?
Well, uh, what we would be doing is watching, monitoring, whichever way we do, the sexual offender register. Uh, the sexual offender are required to go to the sheriff's office and notify them of their moving from residence to residence. And then we kind of monitor that as that goes along with inside of our city. And it's really with inside of our county. And, um, so I, I don't see necessarily a problem with enforcement if we can get, get a good prosecution out of it once we, we start to identify those individuals. I also don't think necessarily, uh, that we're going to have an issue with this particular individual when we bring it to their attention, says you cannot reside in this area. Now, we may inefficient citation, it may be brought before a judge, but that's not that big of a deal.
Well, we're just talking about predators, not offenders.
That's correct.
And there is a difference.
Yes.
And so, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and I, I, you are absolutely correct. We're ta, I'm talking about predator offenders here, predator offenders in this particular one. And ones that have been convicted of child abuse is what they're calling the predator ones.
Okay.
Okay, and the offenders could be those that have been convicted of sexually assaulting someone over the age of eighteen.
Okay, I didn't know where they were with the.
Yeah, and that's what they're trying to separate the two. Between predators is somebody that is sexually assaulted, somebody who was.
Thank you, any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this? It's not a public hearing, but I know a lot of people interested in this item. Does anyone wish, yes, Bonnie, please come up and state your name and address, please.
Do I have to give my name?
Yes, I know who you are, but.
Well, as I told you the other day, my name is Bonnie Fritz, and I live at eleven oh six East Ridge half the time. The other half, I live at five forty-six North First. It starts off, and I know five minutes, and I can get it done in five minutes. Um, on December sixth, I received a phone call in the afternoon from Amber Fiala, who is the principal of St. John Lutheran School. She advised me of a gentleman who was living right behind me, because I'm at five forty-six North First, and he's in five forty North, five forty-nine North Columbia. The only thing is, between him and me is an alley. But the thing that is worrying me is this affects three of my childcare families that I've had for quite a long time, which also comes down to that applies to five children. You know, it's, I know it's, I can't understand why somebody like him. We're not the problem why he is where he's at, but the thing is, he did get for a third degree sexual assault on a child. I don't care if it was anything else, but I'll tell you right now, when you do that, you're in my territory, and you're going to deal with me. Because nobody is going to get any of my daycare kids. My coworker Kylie and I are out there in the play yard at all times, watching your children. But to watch some guy that I don't know, and you don't know either, if he could come across and want to do something, I don't know. But Lord, I hope not that it happens. The thing that got the day, yes, I went and talked to Bruce, and I was upset, and yes, I had some tears. But the thing is, folks, you have an ordinance in the City of Seward. If your dog craps on somebody else's yard, you clean it up, right? But you know what? We don't have an ordinance in this town to protect our kids. And I'm sorry, I hope nobody burns my house down or whatever, but I'm here to protect these children. And also, the other thing is for the part of, we've got St. John's School. I have, and Connie and I have watched lots and lots of kids watching, walking down Columbia Street. But the other thing is, we have Concordia University there too. And I'm not saying that he would do it or anything, but, um, no, Dan, to your con, John, he is not a resident there. He is Emily's boyfriend. He has been there since May. And it's just, just a little bit of time that he's been there, we've watched his identity. He had longer hair and a beard, wasn't very long, but he always wore sunglasses. I don't care if he wore sunglasses at five o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, he always wore sunglasses. But his appearance has changed, he's got his head shaved now, he's got a goatee. And so, he's been changing his appearance through the, through the summer, we've been watching it. But, um, I beg you, and I thank you, Mr. Hub Schneider, for pulling up an ordinance to something. But I appreciate for you taking out your time and listening to us and helping us, and also to help my daycare families. And not all that, there's other kids too. But I want something for these kids, I want some. But I want something for these kids, I want something for their safety, for their well-being, and feel that they're protected in this community. And from the bottom of our hearts, thank you.
Thank you, any questions, Bonnie? Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Hello? Yes, go ahead, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Amber Fiala, four eleven North Columbia Avenue. I do have a a letter here from Pastor Brue to pass on to you, he's not able to attend. Just pass this on to you, who would like that.
We can, actually, we can take it and then um.
You can read it.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get available.
So.
Yeah.
And would like to say, understand we live in a broken world, and any ordinance that we create will not be perfect. And ultimately, as parents, we need to protect our children and know where they're at. I do ask for you to strongly consider the city ordinance. To not have the predators right next door for that to be a temptation for them, as hopefully they heal and get the help they need. To um work through that, but also for our children as well, um for them to have the comforts. A lot of our students do walk home or walk to daycare, um because their parents are working. And so I strongly ask you to consider us, in reading it, um our school is included in that, so thank you for the wording choice that you selected in that. And for your hard work at the quick turnaround between springing it to your attention and then tonight's meeting, so thank you.
Any questions? Say no, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? See no one else? Any other questions or comments from the council? I'll ask someone to introduce this ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to adopt sexual predator residency restrictions. To prohibit certain persons subject to the Sex Offender Registration Act and defined as sexual predators from residing in certain areas within the city. To establish penalties for a violation, to repeal conflicting ordinances and sections, and to provide an effective date. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-two, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Say no, please address your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz, Noah, Samuel, Schmidt, hands, motion.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-two, anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Second, the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Say no, please address your votes. Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz, Noah, Samuel, Schmidt, hands, motion.
Thank you. Um, item number twelve. Uh, this is an update from Blue Stem Energy, and I believe Matt is here to address the council.
Good evening.
Matt, you just wanna give a moment?
Yeah.
If anyone plans on on leaving, we can go ahead and take a a break here. We, I expect room to clear out pretty much, so. But thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you and have a very Merry Christmas, everybody.
You too. Looks like enough people on the couch, I think. You're worried.
Between our large and hearts, Kyle.
Right. Well, Matt, welcome.
Good evening, uh, good to be back in front of you here this evening, um, appreciate your time. I just wanted to give you an update on some activities in regards to the Wind Turban project. Uh, that have ha- have happened recently, and then some activities that will be happening uh in the relatively near future. So I've been in contact with Bruce here uh over the last couple months, so he's been aware. Uh, and I just asked him if I could come in front of the council and give you folks an update as well. Uh, so here a few months back, we executed the interconnection agreement um on our project or our site uh west of town. And at that time, I mentioned that we had a couple of approvals that we were still working towards to to obtain. One of those approvals that we were still working towards uh was with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And in subsequent communications with them, uh, they have voiced concerns. About wetlands in the area in relation to our proposed site uh west of town. And so uh, there's a large wetland, I guess, to the south of Tamora, and then there's some smaller wetlands. Up in the Staplehurst area, and and because of those wetlands in in proximity to our location. Their recommendation currently is is that we move our site uh east of Seward. And so we are still investigating options uh that may come into play to try to uh obtain that approval at our current site west of town. Um, and we're working through those possibilities. That being said, we have also moved forward with their recommendation, and we started developing a second site east of Seward. And so at this point, we have uh another parcel of ground under lease about three and a half miles east of Seward, uh just on the south side of Highway thirty-four. That, uh, having that ground under lease uh gives us the uh opportunity. To start preliminary dirt work at this proposed foundation site at our new site east of town. By the end of two thousand sixteen. And why that's important is because um uh there's tax credits, federal tax credits that come into play on these projects. And there's certain requirements you have to have in place um on your projects prior to the end of sixteen to qualify for the tax credits, okay? The pricing that's in place with the city of Seward takes into account uh this full tax credit, a hundred percent of this tax credit. This tax credit's in its certain state or in its its existing state until the end of sixteen. And then ratchets down by twenty percent annually over the next five years until it's phased out of the industry, okay? And so um having this ground under lease east of town, um starting this preliminary site work prior to the end of the year. Uh, in the eyes of the IRS, secures those tax credits for this project, not only on our current site west of town, but also a secondary location east of town.
Do you have approval from the F for federal agency?
We will, yeah, absolutely. And so uh, I guess we are really developing two sites simultaneously, right? All of the development activity is done west of town. But ultimately, if we aren't able to obtain that U.S. Fish and Wildlife approval through the agency. We would then have to uh move to our our other location east of town. Uh, we would go back and and have to work to get all of the uh approvals and permits in place. Uh, and then work that uh that site through the local zoning process, just like we have the site west of town. Go ahead, Billy, John.
So, you know, before, you know, you were doing the proximity of the substation. Now, how's that gonna affect uh if you do locate east of town?
Yeah, and so when we were west of town, we had a point of interconnect back to the city of Seward system. Uh, which was about two miles west of uh Seward on the south side of Highway thirty-four. And in that feeder line, uh, I believe it was a twelve-five line that fed a well field out there, is that right? And uh, in in that line then fed back into like your fourteenth street, so. So I've been in contact with Larry, and we've got a viable point of interconnect east of town as well. Uh, if you're familiar with uh the, I believe it was an old implement dealership, maybe?
John, your dealership down there, we have a three-phase line that's lying into the.
So there's a line there that we can interconnect into east of town. So uh, I guess we've done some homework there and and have a a point of interconnect east of town as well.
Any other questions? Yes, Ellen.
If you resolve the issues on the west side, but you also have the east side, would you consider a second turbine?
Um, no, uh, contractually, the city, the city doesn't have that option right now. We're working within the carve-out of your NPP contract, I believe you've got a two-megawatt uh carve-out. And uh, one turbine is one point seven megawatts, and so it uses up most of your your local allotment. So a second turbine isn't isn't fine. Our load would basically have to double for us to be able to do more. We can do ten percent, right now, we're a little over twenty megawatt peak, so we can do two. So as we grow, we might build that on later, but right now, this is pretty much it.
And then maybe the other options on the ground, if you wanted to do other types of renewable energies, like solar, that would fill that gap. And did you ever talk with, I asked you to talk with like the world public?
Yeah, so so actually, as we were actively developing the other site uh west of town. The landowner that we had under lease was interested in in potentially putting a second turbine in in another pivot corner of his ground. At that time, we had approached uh Seward Public Power. But it it didn't, it didn't go that far.
That would be the, pretty much your only other option unless you had an agreement with NPPB, right?
Correct.
Around here.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, our model is is uh distributive generation, which basically we're tying into our customer system. A hundred percent of the electricity is used right here locally, in this case by the city of Seward. So like Bruce said, unless your load uh grew exponentially, you know, there there really, there really isn't that option there. But anyway, I guess I wanted you folks to be aware that uh we were starting activities at a second site. Here after I've given you you guys this update, in the next couple days, I'll be in contact with uh the Planning and Zoning Administrator at Seward County. As well as the Seward County Commissioner, so they're aware of, uh, they're obviously aware of our project west of town because uh we've worked it through zoning. But just to give them an update of our site east of town, let them be aware that there will be some some site activity coming before the end of the year. Uh, and and so everybody's on the same page, so. But yeah, I'll be in contact with them in the next couple days, and then we'll have an excavation through up in their work.
I think John hasn't.
Yeah, so you'll have to get state access as well, since if you're thinking about coming to the old John Deere site, have you done that?
State access.
Right away to come down next, 'cause you wanna come down the highway?
No, I haven't yet, but uh, but we will. Uh, you're talking to use the road right of way for a collection? Yeah, yep, we'll work through that. That's, not that, not not that I'd wanna guarantee we could obtain it, right, but but typically, that's not a a major issue. On our site west of town, they didn't have an issue at all, uh, giving us permit for the road right of way. And I know they've got a lot buried in the ditch west of town, they just put some new fiber optic in and stuff like that, so. Uh, I don't I don't foresee that being an issue, but that's one of the activities we'll have to take take place.
Any other questions or comments, Matt? Thank you for coming this evening and.
Thanks, guys.
Giving us an update.
Appreciate it, we'll keep you up to date. Merry Christmas.
Yeah, you too, thanks. Item thirteen is consideration of request for off-street parking from Christine Eastman, three forty North Third Street. John, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, this is a request by Christine Eastman. She currently has a residence, obviously, at three forty North Third Street. But she was currently has one off-street stall in place because she had, her lot's very small. And she has no alley access, and she has no garage, so she uses that for for her parking. She does know that this is on city property, therefore she cannot restrict people. From uh using these two parking spaces if you allow her to have an additional stall. But basically, it's pretty simple, they're just supposed to have another stall space, install a stopover.
Any questions or comments from the council on this item? And Johnny, you don't see, you have any concerns or hesitation for this?
No. And and actually, it's not very far, it's one block over from the fire department, so it's not very far from the central business district to be in. It's not, like.
Any questions or comments from the council? Or was it a motion?
Smooth.
Second.
Just declared by the motion is to approve the request for off-street parking.
Yep.
Okay, the motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
He's not paying for it. I know, it's so so for cutting into the street and everything, there's no issue then as far as curbing and cut?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Say no, please address your votes. Please play the votes. Item fourteen, this is consideration of a claim for wild cow practice at nine oh five Main Street for personal property loss. Bruce, do you wanna summarize that for us?
Well, this is a claim from Dr. Wild, and we did have an outage. That was caused by a lightning arrester that shorted out and it took out the substation, Fourteenth Street. And uh, and that's what happened. Larry can talk about it if you need information, but again, normally, we send these over to our insurance company. But, you know, we don't have a lot of control over the electric system, we can do all we can do, and we weren't working on anything at the time that this happened, it was just a lightning arrester that went out.
Yes, sir.
What was the extent of the property loss?
According to the claim, it's thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
But like what happened, did something burn up or blow up on the property or?
The X-ray machine went out. The X-rays unit went out.
Go out.
Right, they can, sure.
Yeah, but what kind of property damage did it cause?
What was the item that was?
The, an X-ray unit. The claim is for an X-ray unit.
Oh, okay, so in a piece of equipment?
Right, that's the.
Okay, that's that's what I was after, yeah.
Right, that's what the claim's for, and that's. So.
Doc, you're here, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I could, I could add a few more and stuff about.
We obviously, we have your, we state your name.
Right, uh, Dr. Wild, uh, my address is eleven eleven Ridge Run, um, here in Seward. Uh, on that date, what happened was is the power went out uh before we left the office. The X-ray machine we have is a digital X-ray machine, the part of the camera has to be kept at negative ten degrees Celsius. When that power went out, um, I don't remember when it regained, we went, we went home. We came back on Friday to check the machine, and the machine would not operate. When we called um the service guy to come out, um, water or moisture had condensed in the camera. And that's what caused the camera to fail. And so basically, on this unit, it's half of the unit, part of the X-ray machine is good, it's just that part of the machine cannot be replaced. And so uh, that was the claim uh based on on the power failure. Uh, those machines usually last for quite a long time, and uh, we actually, interestingly enough, the machine was working. We had one set of X-rays to do one picture, and that's when the power went out. So the machine was operational up until that point in time. Now, I do understand that um sometimes there's things that are, that happen, but um. I'm looking for the insurance company to help out uh in this process, and I, you know, there's, you know. That's just kind of what we're looking for. And we don't know what else we can do with that, as a matter of fact, so. And what I am looking for is for the insurance company, um, also, I would like to have the adjuster contact me personally on that. So that we have contact with whoever's um looking at that. Insurance companies never wanna pay, you know? But um, this is something that I think um we're gonna pursue, so, all right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Go ahead and entertain a motion, if someone would like to make one this time.
I'll move to deny the claim and forward it to the insurance company.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Say no, please address your votes. Please play the votes. Item fifteen, this is consideration of a corrected ordinance approving the compensation, uh, the comprehensive pay plan. And a cost of living increase effective December one, twenty sixteen, Bruce?
Well, even though Bonnie and I and Chris all went through this several times, we did have a couple of errors on pay lines. That we needed to get cleaned up before it went into effect, so um, we're just asking for those changes to be approved.
Smooth.
We'll have to go ahead and introduce.
Oh, you're.
Yeah.
Okay, all our disorders, I'll, I'll do it.
All right. Assuming there's no discussion. Notice for, to, an ordinance to provide for a two percent cost of living adjustment. To provide for classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska. To provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees. Provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation. Shall become effective to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time. to provide for publication in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-three, and the title is hereby approved, making a motion to dispense with a statutory rule.
Same.
The motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Same.
Give a motion and a second is ready for discussion. Seeing none, please register your vote. I'm sorry, the question is, the ordinance number twenty sixteen dash twenty-three, we finally passed and adopted, please register your vote. Please display the votes. Now, I need one final motion to make this, all the ordinances this evening a part of the permanent record.
Same.
The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, next we have item number sixteen, this is the city administrator's report.
The report's in your packet. Been going to a lot of lunches for development stuff, and between that and candy at the office, I think I gained ten pounds. We've been, we've been really busy, there's, Jonathan's been doing a lot of work and bringing in a lot of people to talk to about new businesses and stuff in town, so it's kind of an exciting time. On that, we're, we did get the grant like we talked about last time for the downtown planning grant. And so we had a meeting last night with some downtown business people, as well as Send, who's gonna be the, doing the work, putting out the application and handling the CDBG stuff. And then, so we're gonna be looking for a engineering firm or a design firm to do the project for us. So we're gonna be going out for an RFQ for the downtown project, and then we'll have a group that will decide who gets it based on certain facts, like if they've done historic work before in historic downtowns, if they've done work on second floors and things like that. So we'll have a group of downtown people, because this is kinda their project, so. We wanna make sure that they're heavily involved in this. So before we choose anybody, it obviously will come back to the city council for their approval, because it is our grant, it's the city's grant, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at with that downtown project.
Any questions for Bruce, his report? Or was there a motion? Do you accept the city administrator's report? Give a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Are there any future requests for council items or administrative action? Seeing none, I also don't have any announcements of upcoming events unless someone would like to add something. Seeing none, I didn't take a motion to adjourn. The motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.